Here. This is everything that I gave you today. And then this, um, that by now, ten to month is from first of October, end of September, so that's updated in.
So this is on my page.
Which, yeah, we've, from, from the county road.
And then I mean, that deal already.
And then the unorganized road.
But this is how.
Other than that, we didn't make any other changes.
Oh.
But even if this, or everything was as of yesterday.
Okay.
And the mill rate as of yesterday.
One of the biggest issues is that. That whole department.
Well, sure, but.
I mean, I'm all right, if you don't, if you don't wanna do this, if you don't wanna do this, I'm all right with that. But this one is just me trying to keep my, this is the thing, it's going to take the work separate here.
You got it wrong. Hey, remember we need to assign that deed? We have to go through the box, he's getting a lot of it. And that was for the parcel we sold to, sold to that company.
He's, he's a assistant.
Just try to remember. I don't think that, cause he's also a truck driver, but also know whatever this should be.
I don't know where you want to put them. But those expenses, they need to get real listed before coming out.
Send Liza a text and ask her when she estimates she can be here. I'd like us all five to.
Fifty or something.
Yeah.
I can even call them, we need to order and delay us a little bit.
Yeah, well, I know she had a nine o'clock and she was gonna try to get here by ten.
I can't see what else.
But she said she might be a few minutes late.
Yeah, I have to run.
But this, this is how I would.
I'm not looking at this.
No, I'm not, but I don't want this.
Oh.
I don't want this. Be driven.
I was way back at nine o'clock.
Or even not the same as this.
This one, she, this two, but I don't know where.
Yeah, I'm not diligent at, um, checking my phone for messages. And emails.
No, she was just waiting for some results.
Oh, yes. Travis will go, well, I sent you an email yesterday.
That's how I would do it.
A message, oh, yeah, you did.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I don't look all the time, I don't live on this thing.
But what is.
We should, uh, send it in the mail then.
Flare up or something, my phone needs to go hybrid and shake it.
Okay, so I got you updated. And I gave him.
Five o'clock, I'm almost near her.
And, um, these are the sheets that they got. As of yesterday.
Yeah, that's how I would do it.
I just came this.
But I mean, you, you know. You know what I mean?
So, oh, this is just the county road. Get county road and unorganized road since, you know, February.
Feel like you're in grade school already? Rick, sit down.
I ended up in the principal's office. I ended up with lawyers and that, and it was going to get home.
Okay, ten o'clock, we'll call this, Mr. County meeting to order, uh, pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a single justice for all.
Got us all messed up. Okay. Uh, need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Jean, I, passed. Okay. I was, I'm gonna give, uh, Liza a quick call. Cause I'd like us all here before we even start the discussion, so. She said she's gonna be here, but she might be late. Yeah, how far out are you? Oh, so you got about a half hour yet. All right. Yeah. Yeah, I told the rest of the commission I'd like, but if you sense you're not just three, four minutes off, we'll get started. Okay. Thank you, Liza. Yep, yep, right. Uh, she's gonna be, uh, a few more minutes, so we can get going. She won't be here till about ten, twenty. Okay, um. The. The sheriff's here. Um, I don't even know, I'll just, I'll get this started with, uh, the. I'm gonna get there. Cash reserve. And, well, let's, let's, no, let's change this a little bit, let's go with our. Is it the coal severance money? That got changed, uh, or is it the coal conversion got changed significantly? I think it's coal conversion, right? What is the exact number to date that we've received?
That fifteen thirty-two. Five ten ninety or something is what it is, we wrote it up.
Fifth, we have received fifteen thirty-two as of today?
Yeah. I have it, Jamie, just, I have them all.
No, that's good enough.
Coal conversion, we have collected one thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars, five hundred and, one million five hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred ten dollars and ninety-one cents, sorry about that.
Uh, I'm s- I was d- I was looking at my sheet here, one, about fifteen thirty-two?
One million five hundred thirty-two, five ten.
Yep. What did we? Actual estimated, actual revenues, estimated revenues, did we estimate seven hundred thousand for next year?
Sure did.
But we had a shortfall that was included in that, correct?
Not in, yeah.
In, in this year's?
In the million five hundred thirty-two thousand, there was nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand that we got. For shortfall, I believe is what they call it.
So we're estimating getting seven hundred thousand next year?
Yes. The reason being because we don't, we can't count on shortfall, we don't get that every year.
Uh, oh, I understand that.
Okay.
Prior to this budget sheet, what was our estimated amount?
Twenty-three, we actually got eight hundred forty thousand.
I got that. Before you handed us, before you did the changes on that one, before this red seven hundred thousand was put in, what was it?
Okay, coal severance.
Coal conversion.
Coal conversion, okay, before that, we had seven hundred thousand as an estimate.
Before this seven hundred thousand?
Yes.
Why'd you put this one in red then? You said, these are the changes, the red.
I don't know, it's just we made the change on the income and, you know, but it wasn't a change on the income. Well, it wasn't a change on estimated revenues, but it was definitely a change when we got the update on what we had received to date. So then what other revenues went up so significantly to? Change things?
Correct. I would concur with Jamie's question. Because I was told that the revenues went up about seven hundred thousand because you made a seven hundred thousand dollar.
No, that's not what I said, what I said was our estimated cash reserve at the end of this year for two thousand twenty-four will be up seven hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand, whatever the number is, I don't hold the numbers.
Oh, because we got that other.
We got that shortfall.
Our cash carryover.
Our cash carryover will be higher because of that.
All right. I was under, with the understanding that, that got changed. To about one point five million instead of seven hundred thousand.
So, in your preliminary budget, you, what you were not commenting for was the cash carryover for the.
Because of the shortfall.
The actual, what you're budgeting for coal, uh, conversion didn't really change, but you have that.
But I thought we had the cash carryover in earlier preliminary, the nine hundred and some was already in there, I saw that in there earlier. But we didn't, we weren't looking at the other. You got some extra on, and soon.
When did that come in?
From September, from Aug, uh, uh, but, we had that in, we had that earlier on in February.
Yes.
And then, and then this other stuff, the changes came from August to September would be what we got, what you explained yesterday, what made it look different.
Yep, yeah, updated. The updated paper, but the se- the, the nine hundred thousand was in there in February.
Yeah, and that, and that was already in the preliminary, you had put that in.
Yeah, it was.
No, it wasn't, it was seven hundred fifty-four.
Okay, so then.
So if we got that payment in February, why was our coal severance, why was the coal conversion?
On.
Significantly.
On your, on your document, before this updated document, on page five, total revenue. Estimated for twenty twenty-five, what did you show then?
Okay. Ask that question again, Jamie.
Okay, yeah, ask it again.
Prior to making this, uh, change.
Right. Should be on the preliminary.
Could have been on the preliminary. Because after the change, on page five, you show total revenue, um, three million eight hundred and two thousand. What was it prior to that?
The very last number on page five.
Right, okay, on the preliminary.
Because this three million eight hundred thousand should show the carryover.
Okay, and you're, are you looking at the estimated, this one, right here? Okay, cause on the preliminary.
Total revenue.
Five, three million six hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two, this is the preliminary.
Three, six?
For preliminary, I have three, six, sixty-eight, three, six, ninety-eight, this says sixty-eight.
Okay, what, okay, okay, three million six hundred ninety-eight thousand.
Ninety-eight, okay.
Pardon?
Cause three, six, five.
The same page five, uh.
Three, six, nine, eight, two, three, two, twenty-three.
Three, six, nine, eight. Yeah.
And even the changing your revenue, that. If we had that in February, that number should have been significantly higher.
It should have been, and I, I'm not, we aren't claiming, we, we already said we made a mistake, it's just, it happened. I think the reason we didn't put it in there was because it's not normal revenue, and so we took it into account in twenty-five and just didn't think about it in twenty-four.
Okay, what was this number prior?
Three, six, nine, eight, two, three, two, twenty-three. That's why we've got a whole county pissed off.
Okay.
Now, that's what we got, that's what we took that park salute money out. And that one twenty-seven, we took it out of that coal.
I'm gonna do right to your pennies. This darn thing always times out. Three, eight, oh, two. I had a calculator and it went to hell on me.
Did you determine what that preliminary number was, the six, six, eight, or the six, ninety?
It's gotta be six, six, eight, cause you guys got the preliminary and I want to update and stuff.
Okay. They increased our revenue by a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six. And you, you told me that.
Six, six, eight. But it's thirty.
Okay, what was your question?
The difference is a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six, but we got a seven hundred fifty thou- four thousand dollar extra payment that was gonna be in the carryover. How does seven hundred fifty-four, a hundred and four, that's a six hundred thousand dollar difference?
Don't you add them together? If you have seven hundred fifty thousand dollars more in cash carryover and a hundred and four thousand dollars more in your budget, don't you add them together?
If. If you're estimating seven hundred, if we actually got like seven hundred thousand, but we got another seven hundred and fifty-four thousand. Then our total revenue should have reflected seven hundred fifty-four thousand, if we're gonna have about seven fifty-four carryover, which you didn't have prior to this, not, prior to these numbers. So your total was three million, six hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two. But if you add, if I take the three thousand, three million eight hundred two thousand and subtract the three hundred and six ninety-eight. I come up with a hundred and four thousand dollar difference and not a seven hundred fifty-four thousand dollar difference, and I could care less about even fifty thousand or thirty thousand, but a hundred and four and seven fifty-four is a significant difference.
Yeah, but they're not the same number. What you're looking at in the seven hundred fifty-four thousand is cash carryover to next year, that doesn't have anything to do with that last column, that last column.
Well, wouldn't that be in, that's gotta be in here somewhere. You're gonna have the carryover in here somewhere.
It would still flow down on these columns.
Yeah.
From the preliminary to this new sheet you guys printed, when you added the seven hundred fifty-four thousand, the numbers should still add up and still be seven hundred fifty-four thousand dollars difference. I don't think this bleeds into this.
I.
I'm just gonna.
Revenues are estimates.
Jamie, am I making any sense?
These are.
Yeah, no, we're tracking you, we don't understand why.
But then what bleeds over.
I mean, I'm just going to, I'm kind of, kind of.
Isn't that.
I'm not an accountant, so.
Cause they have.
People can say, well, no, you're.
The cash carryover and the, the, um, revenues on those dot pages don't have anything to do with each other, where that cash carryover comes into play is at the very bottom of the very last sheet on page.
So page four and page five don't have anything to do with each other?
No, no.
When they're both revenues?
The columns are separate, so you have twenty-three.
But you still get a total revenue at the bottom.
Total revenue like for estimated revenues, they don't bleed into each other, what bleeds into it is in the end when it's taken away from your, um, expenses. And then, and then that's how the mill is estimated, once these are, then they.
So if I go and calculate all these columns down, I should, I won't get this number at the bottom, for total.
If you add up all the requested, um, I gotta get to the right page here, sorry. You add up all the estimated revenues for two thousand twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
And you add up all the estimated revenues for two thousand twenty-five, you will hit those two numbers on the bottom of page five.
Correct.
Okay, but that, that estimated two thousand twenty-four revenues carryover does not have anything to do with the estimated revenues for two thousand twenty-five. Where that comes into play is at the very bottom of page eight.
Okay. All right.
Do you know?
There. That's the total appropriation. Revenue. Balance of, so, where would the seven hundred fifty-four thousand be entered into one of these? Lines?
I'm gonna say it shows up on the estimated, um, or the balance. If you look on page eights.
Yep.
And I don't do the budget, you guys, I'm just guessing, I don't know how these numbers flow, I help check the numbers, I don't know how the numbers, but, you know, I mean. But if you go to the bottom of page, um, eight, where it says estimated expenditures, you get the total appropriation of seven point seven, seven, three. Are you following me?
I gotta.
For twenty-four.
For twenty-four, okay.
Okay, Dawn on the bottom where it says your balance of one million five hundred, two thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine, that's where that seven hundred fifty-four thousand would show up, in my mind. That's where that should be, because that would be in that cash carryover that shows up on the next column in the requested twenty-five money for balance January first. And I know, like, I know how some of this flows, but.
Yeah, but that is how it works with that cash carryover.
So if you look on, okay, so you had one million five hundred, two thousand for a balance on the preliminary, if you look on the, um, updated one that Carmen just handed out.
Uh.
That number is now two point two six three, which is about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars higher, right, per take? Two point two minus one point five?
Well, this one, the, in the preliminary, it was one point four.
Well, I have a different, my preliminary, you showed the same thing that Carmen's did, I had a thirty thousand dollars higher, so I don't know.
I have the preliminary due at eight seven.
No, I'm not arguing with you, Jamie, I'm just saying I don't have the same copy. But still, even one point four to two point two is still eight hundred thousand, and the seven hundred fifty thousand wasn't the only thing that went up, so.
So we're, again, back to the same thing that last year is in the, the same copies.
Okay.
I'm not sure I was just, yeah, being self-aware. Is this copy?
We took out one seventeen for parks and, we had nine thirty-two what we got.
And where, like, and where is that on here? Cause it should, how it on?
I'm just like.
The transfer's only twelve five dollars.
It comes out to seven hundred, so either it comes out to eight hundred. You know, because when you, we had roughly nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, what we got from coal, that, that shortfall. We took out roughly one seventeen, cause there was some in there, for parks and mover, so if you took, that's eight hundred and change without.
So now.
There were higher again, so. So, but I mean, that, that number doesn't fit, doesn't fit in there either, mildly. Cause that, cause that's what we did in. April, roughly, or March, somewhere, that was April, cause we got that money in February.
I also wanna know what we got in December for revenue, because December, February, December are like the highest months, so what we, what did we get in December, Carmen, for revenues?
Okay, you mean, December, like, the end of the year? Okay, so, you wanna know what?
How much money we took in in December?
For?
Twenty-three.
In twenty-three.
Okay, um. I'll have to ask Dawn, um, okay, so you wanna know overall, cause every number of cash carryover in twenty-three as of January first is in that actual revenues. So she wants to know, say it again, Jamie, what are you asking for?
Dawn, what we take in for revenue in December of twenty-three?
What did we take in for revenue in December of twenty-three, all total?
Yeah.
I have six, seven, one, three, seven, seventeen, fifty-three, so I know what you have.
So that's all? That's all, or that's just a month of December?
The six, seven, one, three, seven hundred seventeen, fifty-three is for the whole year of two thousand twenty-three.
So six point seven?
Yeah.
Where?
Expenditures, revenue.
We had brought up the one that must have changed ours. A little bit. I was just checking the final numbers.
Now, this is the one that I approved. So on page. Eight of the three different copies I have.
Okay.
Okay. The revenue over, under expenditure for twenty-four, one has one point nine, one has one point one, word of that. Change.
I'm gonna say it went down because of that seven hundred fifty thousand. Part of it, part of it is that. Is it one point nine?
One point nine is on the, from what I can tell, the actual preliminary, but then on the new one, Carmen, it's one point one.
Okay, okay, stick with your preliminary, what does your preliminary say?
I've got three copies, Carmen, that's the preliminary, so.
Okay. And this is the one you just gave us. This is your preliminary.
Yep.
So, okay, so that's where I'm at now, I'm on the one that's the preliminary. Okay.
But these two, this one's dated nine twenty-seven, and this one is, okay, this isn't the one that we're.
Dated nine twenty-seven also, and it says one point one. Okay, so that's where we did updates and we presented that to you yesterday.
So this is where did that eight hundred thousand go?
Eight hundred thousand, oh. Okay. So that's under estimated expenditures in twenty-four.
The difference from one point.
The difference is seven hundred sixty-one thousand. Which is that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars more in revenue that we didn't have accounted for.
But the new copies, the old copy is here's seven hundred and some, eight hundred thousand dollars higher on this revenue over than these new copies.
Okay, so here's where she's looking. Okay, so here's where she's looking. This is revenue over, under, in this case, because it's in parentheses, it's under.
Actually under because of the parentheses, so that's the.
So seven hundred fifty thousand dollars less will bring it down. More than it already was before.
And is it seven hundred sixty?
Yeah, it's seven hundred sixty-one thousand. Per take. So we're working off this nine, well, the whole date of nine twenty-seven, but we got this one yesterday. That, that's the most updated one is the one that I gave you yesterday, only the sheets that should be replaced in your twenty-seven one, but your preliminary is the preliminary. That we approved, Jamie, you got a copy of it, I got here, just cause Dawn and I changed some numbers, that's the only thing, but we got it sitting there, so ask away.
She remembers after statements.
Yep. Three copies of it.
No, at least they're thirty-seven.
Okay.
That's number.
I just, that number?
Yes, we need to approve this, as you take, I pity after, so this is the copy she's looking at. I must have changed the.
I'm questioning why seven hundred fifty thousand wasn't put in the preliminary tax statements, but pissed off at home, that's what I'm questioning.
I'm becoming an accountant.
To, to recap for somebody that walked in later, um, our.
To, to recap for somebody that walked in later, um, our preliminary number did not include over nine hundred thousand dollars of shortfall that was received in February, but not included in our preliminary budget.
So your preliminary tax statements are significantly higher than they should have been.
Well, we, we also understand that because people who are making decisions for accounting can't make decisions if we don't have to.
Um, so I'm gonna ask you, if you're here for something specific, cause this isn't really a public hearing, but is there something specifically, or were you just gonna be in the audience? Okay, thank you. So if you wanna sit and stare at us, you certainly can.
Did you get your number down?
But estimated revenue.
Oh, you love it, oh, you love it, never mind, I thought you were sitting.
This is uh the total of this number, correct?
Yes. Well, actually.
By the way, in two years, this position is open also. You can run against. And Dan can help you and Yada.
What's our total revenue?
Here, I'll just, here, I'll do, so you can, the actuals is not close either.
Okay, these actuals aren't, maybe she added them up, but these.
Okay, let's start with this one, start with this one. Three, making sure I don't get three forty-one.
And I understand if there's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in the checking account, we have to account for it, I get that. My question originally was, I don't want to account for an estimated amount of money coming in um next year, based on multiplication factors of what we got this year, divide by nine, times twelve, and say, okay, that's what we estimate our revenue is going to be next year. That's why my original question was, what have we received in, uh, I wanna make sure I say the name right, coal conversion as of to date.
Okay, see, to make sure that's correct. So this is a.
But you say we received one point five million. And that was because we got additional seven hundred fifty thousand. For next year, you're only estimating seven hundred.
Well, she put that in, so. When it comes to this document, the case of the states, that's how they do it.
Sounds like, sounds like we're out of order, but we're, we're okay. What makes this nice is at least commissioners are being engaged and getting, asking questions, getting answers, rather than just sitting here and so. Might sound like we're way out of order, but things are moving along here, we're doing business.
But then we have these numbers then also changed.
So back to my original. So for next year, you're estimating seven hundred thousand in coal conversion, not one point five, as it says. Okay. Prior to that stipend that we got from the state for coal conversion, what was our number? About seven hundred fifty, about half, right? Okay.
I think I figured it was six hundred and three thousand.
So you feel the seven hundred is up?
Well, there's still three months left in the year, so.
Well, right, we might get more. Because next year we may not get the seven hundred and fifty extra, or bonus, or whatever the heck it was called. Wow, okay.
Do you mind if I give a little recap here?
You certainly can.
Just for people out there, so that understand what we're looking at and where we're at. So our preliminary budget, and I'm just gonna talk in mils, um, we, we had a general fund mill levy of fifty-eight point seven seven. As we're sitting right now, it's looking at a forty-six point four two. So a decrease of approximately twelve mils. Um, our county road, um, preliminary was fourteen point eight one, um, we're down to twelve point one four on that one, so there was a reduction on those. Um, several of our smaller ones stayed the same because those are external budgets. So when you look at our total mills in the preliminary, um, was a hundred and nineteen point three nine. And we're at approximately a hundred and three right now, which equates to roughly nine hundred thousand dollars reduction in taxes overall. It's kind of a general overview of what's been changed.
My new one from today says ninety-eight.
Okay, well, that's even more, I was looking at yesterday's.
What was, what's the change from the, the one on two point eight total from the ninety-eight?
I don't.
That would have been, um, on ironized roads, we went from thirteen point six four down to eight point nine three. Yep.
Majority of our conversation has been around that nine hundred, or that's seven hundred fifty thousand.
Okay, that one, okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, yeah, each one of those segments.
Now, I don't wanna step away from this revenue question on the seven fifty-four, but are we pretty well clear as mud on it?
Yeah, it is what it is.
Okay.
And you're taking that times the fifty-six thousand.
I took the one nineteen number minus the ninety-eight point oh nine, multiplied by that was fifty-six.
Seventy-two.
And it was how much? One point two million roughly, okay.
I'm not making calls, but I use this as my calculator, cause I had a calculator and I went bad. And I keep forgetting.
So where we're sitting, it's still an increase in last year, but it's significantly less increase. Yes.
Jean?
Yes?
So, um, my concern is whether or not, I imagine we're all concerned about that. Will the citizens of Richfield get a new statement prior to when people, I mean, I know people are voting now, but.
Nope.
The best we could probably do is put it in the paper.
We could maybe put it on our website.
That's biggest part of my frustration is.
Let people know.
Right.
Could we, uh, everybody gets a dollar saver, right?
I think so.
Yeah. That would be worth a few looks.
I, I, there's rules with the dollar saver, but I know sometimes they're able to post it as on the front, I'll be checking for that, but I can't.
It doesn't necessarily have to be the front, I mean.
But we prefer the front.
Right. Yeah, and I think we can definitely get it on our website, though, too.
Okay, what did you want on the website specifically? Decrease in the mills. Okay.
Even if you approve the file here today, or if, you know, if you're set up another meeting, this, this is where things are at with this current production.
Right.
Okay, yeah. Thanks, Dan.
You gotta be careful how I address measure four when I'm sitting here, but it's gonna severely impact everybody.
Carmen, I can give the facts, uh, you know, I know a lot of people have noticed how to think of corporations in counties, um, you know, I know a lot of oil and gas companies, so I can talk about that, but in McKenzie County, one of those pays nineteen million dollars in taxes to McKenzie County, and that's fifteen percent of the McKenzie County budget. Um, we have coal conversion, coal extraction, that's in lieu of property taxes, but it has also, you know, property taxes go away, that feels so great, it is somewhat, it says in the century code.
Right.
I mean, so, you know, like Walmart and Bismarck, they're paying you property taxes to earlier. It's much easier to talk about those corporations that a lot of people don't really stop to think about the businesses around them versus just the residential piece.
Well, you know, just in what you just said, and we, and the conversations we just had here for the last half hour, reflect on exactly what you just said, because of seven hundred thirty thousand dollars is gonna affect all our taxes. And all we're talking about was coal conversion and coal severance to numbers.
It had drastic impact.
You know, exactly, it's what's gonna change. And we're gonna be from, we're gonna be sitting here and it's gonna go, it's gonna be gone.
Yeah. I certainly would love to talk about that top, topic some more, but that is not what's on the agenda, I'm sorry. Yeah, I would. It's very hard for me to avoid talking about that, but uh, I think, I think we have to at this point, but yeah, you can talk with me after the meeting, I mean, there are so many things, but gotta get back to the budget, that's what this is about, and of course, that does affect the budget, but so yes, seven hundred fifty thousand roughly changed our mill, well, mill levy by damn near eleven mils. Divided by well, mathematically, it comes out to thirteen mils, seven hundred fifty thousand. So it is, it's a significant change here. But okay, I think we got that and where it's at in the, in the budget. The uh cash reserve amount, um, I know I meant, I brought this up, but I already forgot, it was only yesterday, what, where did we come up with a one hundred? No, it's a hundred thou-
The new page nine.
A hundred thousand five hundred dollars, I can't even say that one. And all my education as a cash reserve on the county road.
Okay, you put the bump ups there. And then that had to change because you wanted it to stay at the twelve point one four.
Okay, that's correct, now I got you. It was using the twelve point one four to come up with the one hundred thousand, okay. Cash reserve is one hundred thousand five hundred dollars.
That's in the county road.
Just in, yeah.
Five one forty-seven, so it was talked about yesterday, we could go in there, but it actually ended up being one hundred five hundred?
Cause, yeah, they put in wage increases for the gold permit.
Yeah, they put five hundred, and now it's a gold of six point two, six point four, or six point four down to six point.
I don't know why that one's so hard to say, one hundred thousand five hundred dollars, that's what it is. The comma was tripping me up. Anyway. That is gonna do it real quick here. There's only one point six percent of uh cash reserve.
Carmen, on page nine, the old page nine versus the new page nine, why is the old six point four and the new is six point two? Okay.
Page nine?
Oh.
One C.
Okay, just in our conversation yesterday.
So you're looking at the county road fund, six point three.
We can go this far, but I mean, we have to.
And the one I handed to you today, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
She's got.
We're looking on page nine.
Yeah, you got the.
The final appropriations on the one, you have six point four, and then the other is six point two.
Okay, so you're on page nine, and you said six point nine, where?
No, so from yesterday, it was at six point four, six, four, two eighty, and now today, the one you gave us is six point two one three five three seven.
This is a story.
Right. So that changes because of the bump ups in the county road, we added the bump ups. So that changed to this number.
Hundred thousand five, and that comes off as six point three four.
Okay, but this number, this high, and it was higher, now this is lower.
Four, two mils here, where we run mine with this.
This is a number. When you change anything in here, right, right here. That top number right there, that's everything there. See, and that is where that is right there. So when you add this to it, that doesn't affect you, this, these are all expenses, that's why we just like that. We can't, what we changed was the bump ups.
Because.
We check bump ups.
I, I get that, you changed the bump ups, but you added money to it, so it, why did it go down?
That can change.
This number.
We can't go to the total of fifty-eight.
Well, that's general, this is probably often, I don't, can you go over the preliminary number?
Yeah, substantially.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't go over the appropriations.
This is today's, yeah, this is today's, actually, this.
From yesterday.
What are we looking at?
What are you looking at?
The number of the six. We have a lot of five hundred thousand, thousand less.
He took it down.
We're looking historically, what we've done, we were, we're low, we're on roads and we have been in the last.
One million under ground pressure in that box.
So if we would raise up the cash reserve.
You're looking at from the approval there to now.
Would raise your mill a little bit, but it'd be historically where we were before.
I would say one, one.
Without just, all I'm saying is that you would tweak it a little bit, to put a little more charge. You don't have to spend.
And that's the change that happened yesterday, that made, you know, that now.
It happened before yesterday.
So then why would this be yesterday? But this is yesterday's.
I just didn't know if you could, uh.
And now this is today's.
Right.
Mill levy was twelve point one four, I think, this might, no, that wrong number changed.
Was that, was that just coming?
Preliminary on the road was what, uh?
What you're looking at, preliminary you're up on, and I know it was higher than that.
Took that down to nine hundred.
That we could go to fourteen twenty-one.
County road preliminary was two point eight one, right?
So you could go to that.
These days.
Which would bring us, cause that cash reserve is quite low.
And then when you bet yesterday.
Cash.
But anyway, that's why it went down, is because he took that.
Cash reserve is, preliminary had about ten percent.
So it went down, and now this shows it's up.
Appropriations, which it won't, and it won't go over your mill, and this is the updated one.
It would be like.
Cause he took it down to do those.
Hundred thousand on the cash reserve.
That was from yesterday.
So this is.
When you came in yesterday, this was before our meeting, it's after our meeting.
So he drafted down one hundred.
That's what we.
Right, yeah.
Right, more than just one hundred, because see, this was one.
Originally, they wanted ten percent.
So he dropped that down to nine hundred fifty thousand.
But I mean, if we did.
Okay.
And then we did the bump ups today.
Wow.
Oh, and then we took three hundred off, down to three hundred.
Hundred forty-nine, plus the hundred, so that would be.
See, those unorganized roads, they were at four fifty. So because of this big drop, we were able to go into that and put it back down to three hundred.
Or what we originally did.
So then that decreased down here, with the transfers in.
So that leaves this number.
Right, so that's when you take about a hundred thousand difference lower, but he's still lower even with the bump up.
Because of taking down that huge amount for gravel.
Yeah. And then he was gonna.
Which would also protect again on preliminary four also.
Which would still only be four percent, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jean, I would like to see the bump ups taken back out of the road department. I have, if that's any, if there's a motion, I'll do it.
Okay, we're gonna get back to this. Where do we go to now?
I don't know, I'm on page ten.
On which one?
Right? The newest one we got today.
You're on page ten?
Yep.
Yep.
I think based off of the, but the numbers that we got for the road department bump ups, until they can give some better justification for some of the significant increases. I think the bump ups need to come back up.
So I know specific one you're looking at.
Could be.
Well, it'd be all of it, it'd be the top, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Three, four, five, six, seven.
You're looking at the old one.
Yeah.
Grab the staple new one.
All the ones in the red.
This is from today, yesterday.
No, you need today's.
You need the staple one from today.
There's a two-page staple one that you need to be looking at.
And that's why I have my fellow commissioners keeping me in order. All right.
Rick, I don't know if you have anything to say, but.
I mean, I'm not saying that it's totally over with, but I'm just saying that, uh, I think we need to go back to, and we have to work on this some more rather than just what we have presented, uh.
I think they're a little extreme, some of them.
You know, that we can make, not saying that we can't make it work, but we, we need, but I mean, if you wanna do it for the budget, you can still get it done in the budget, or, and we can still make this work, you know, later this month yet too. How does it like, if we take the appropriations out that we changed, it would.
Then it would go, well, we wouldn't have to change because the gravel on this old page nine, or page ten, nine, ten.
Okay, I missed the regular meeting on Wednesday, so were these, uh, on the road department approved at the Wednesday meeting?
No.
No.
Then how did they get in here?
She put them in there.
No, I. Rick asked to have it.
We asked for these changes to see what they look like.
Right. I mean, they're just for you guys to view.
This is like more.
So it wasn't a motion to have those in there, it was just to see what it would look like if they were put in there.
Those bump ups?
Yep.
Yes.
The bump ups is this one hundred and thirty?
And.
No, this would be.
Just, I'm, and I might be sounding redundant here, but I'm gonna, because this is budget, uh, why just the road department? Did we ask for just the road department?
Road and sheriff.
Sheriff, there's nothing on here. There's no bump ups in here on the sheriff's. Oh. You might wait a while. No, I mean, you'll, you'll get your turn, but you'll, you'll get your turn, but I don't know when.
So, it's kinda tied in a little bit, but it's not, it's not that one hundred and thirty.
If we would go take the bump ups back out and put them back where they were, that would give you room to more to do your cash reserve right now too.
So.
For the road department.
So, yeah, I agree with.
You would have more room for your cash reserve then.
Yeah, and I agree with Jamie that the road department ones we need to work on a little bit more, cause they were quite, quite a shock to me to see what those were, so.
Yeah, and they're not officially in there.
And that's why we take that back out and go back to.
I think you should go back and take it to what we had within.
Well, I would like to, but.
That's what I did originally in the first place.
Liza, what did, what did, what was your?
I agree with Jamie that the road bump ups should be taken out, because I think we need to discuss that more, because those were quite, quite a bit more than what I was expecting them to be.
Okay, so I'll take them out.
So I know there's at least three commissioners, take them out.
Like, leave the gravel down at nine hundred thousand?
I think, because we can supplement that with the cash reserve if we need to.
Well, that'll, I'm just saying, for numbers, she needs to change, so we could go back to the old page nine, but then the gravel's at one point two. Okay, or if we go to the.
We could go to the original one.
Okay, the county road fund, we can go back, what was the original mill? Fourteen eighty-one.
Yeah.
We can put that at fourteen eighty-one again by changing our cash reserve to, let me write that down. Can't keep track of my own numbers. Right here. We could, we could make that two forty-nine, which would get us to the, close to the fourteen eighty-one. I don't like dabbling with pennies here, but, cause if it's exactly two forty-nine, seven twelve sixty-one, it would come out to fourteen point eighty-one, but let's just do two forty-nine as a cash reserve.
Yeah, okay.
And that is without any adjustment on the wages, and I'm not saying I'm, I'm for or opposed to removing the bump ups. I'm just saying we could go to fourteen eighty-one, because that's what we originally had in the preliminary, which would give us a cash reserve of one forty-seven, which is still only four percent. And we gotta have at least that much.
I just don't want this final approved with the bump ups in there, so wherever you want to adjust it to.
We'll put them back to where the original, the original preliminary numbers were.
Do you have a nu, anyone have a number of, if those bump ups, what, you'd go like this?
Well, they're over here.
No, it's, um.
Actually, on that K thing, there's a tool.
I don't have it. It just had, I mean, we have the salaries, where it's.
Is that this one?
It's got a.
Can't keep track of my own sheets here.
I think it.
Is this your total, but your total increase, that's with all the dollar fifties?
I didn't get a total of the actual bump ups.
Yep.
Yeah, originally, we were at ninety-four, we could go down to ninety-two, cause that would be an actual. We were at fifty-nine, oh fifty-two, we were at, now we're going at sixty-nine, we could go back to our, our actual.
Well, here's current.
We have eighty-three and eighty-seven.
But that's what the bump up.
Two with patrol operators.
You know what I mean? Like, I thought we had like the salary actually.
You could go back to these numbers, those are these numbers.
I'm, but with the dollar fifty.
Is that the total?
You know what I mean?
Yeah, probably five to three.
Hold on, with the cola, without the bump up.
Look at here.
There we go. That's where I think you would get your best number from.
So Rick, what do you want, so you want, you want your gravel to be like two hundred and thirty-one and one?
Yeah.
Cause that's his thing, and Charlie's fault is.
Originally, we did it with one.
And you gotta remember that crushing gravel isn't coming on a mill, it's supposed to come on a period dog, so we told Charlie about that when he.
Right. I had a meeting with him.
Right?
Reason they went from one to one twenty-two was, because we were taking the county road project, five, seven, I don't remember, it was like four, five, like we pulled, you remember?
Okay, so.
Self-performing, we.
Under road department.
Jamie has the old one.
So, so when she revises numbers.
We have a lot of papers.
That'll give us.
Where are they to get the dollar fifty, like every other?
Okay, so I'm gonna change to one.
One million in there, you want some fifteen in the cash reserve.
Yeah.
That one, and then this is two.
So this includes the dollar fifty, which is five.
Right now, you know, we're sitting.
And that's, I, I deal with four sheets, I've been able to figure that.
You can write down fourteen eighty-one.
Twelve, county road is a twelve point four. So, are we sticking with that, right?
We were looking.
Oh.
You wanna go back to the fourteen forty-one, which it was.
We don't wanna go, these numbers minus these.
We can't go over fourteen eighty-one, so.
But we can tweak up from twelve between there, we can, we can, we can end up somewhere in between.
Yes.
Yes.
So you want two hundred and fifty reserve?
So we're thinking.
I'll take out the bump ups.
Yes.
And I add a million to the crap, uh, gravel.
Just change it to, you don't add a million.
No, not add, but I'll change it to, here's the gravel impression.
And if that goes over the.
Fourteen point ones.
Take that.
Take the cash degree now.
No, I would take the.
Take the gravel.
Down to, use that between nine and one, right?
Okay, got it.
That will give you a little room to work with.
Yeah, I know, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
We gotta. Did Travis hear any of that?
Up in the air both.
Okay.
Two years, two conversations.
Trying, trying to process three conversations at the same time, so.
Good luck. I can't handle one.
And I may or may not agree or disagree with any of them.
I don't want your input though.
Wait for Jamie and Liza, cause we gotta, we gotta review what our auditor has written down.
Yeah.
And make sure that, and make sure all the commissioners.
Oh, yeah.
Understand what we.
Well, are at least in agreement.
No, no, this has to go back over here. I don't wanna make sure, so, okay, so first I wanna get it what's right, cause I'm not gonna do it on the fly, I wanna make sure every number's correct.
Okay.
I'm gonna take up the bump ups out, I'm gonna add two hundred and fifty thousand to the hidden balance for the county road, and take the crushing and gravel up to a million.
But our total reserve at two fifty.
Yeah.
You, you use the.
Total reserve, yeah.
You use the word add.
Yeah.
Now, there's a hundred in there already.
Right, total.
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 Not to exceed fourteen point eight.
Okay, fourteen point eight.
So we can, yeah, save for sure enough.
So, very rough, I'm eating five thousand.
Yep. But I wanna make sure.
Okay.
That's how much we'll be putting into.
So eight lines to.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, readjusting to, yeah.
Okay, Liza, Jamie, Travis, Rick. As, uh, our auditor, the request to our auditor, go ahead and review it on this road. What, what do you have?
Okay, I'm gonna take out, um, the bump ups and put back the original wages. I'll have, uh, gravel and crushing will be moved up to a million, and total reserve, two hundred and fifty thousand, and will not exceed fourteen point eight one.
Okay.
Yes.
Liza?
Yes.
If you guys are completely opposed, I wanna know.
No, so I said the top seven lines.
Okay.
And then gravel and crushing, total lines total.
Obviously, we're having another meeting.
Sure are.
Okay. Yes.
Yes. Can I ask a question?
All right, go ahead. You've, you've been very cordial, and you've been not, I haven't had to call the sheriff on you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I'm understanding that the gravel that is going up substantially in this budget is earmarked to come from prairie dog funds, not actually from tax years or whatever, it's going to be from the state prairie dog funds, is that correct?
Actually, yeah.
Yes, we're using the prairie dog funds.
Fifty-five within there also, correct?
Yeah, that, we don't use that on gravel though, we do no five.
Which one, the gravel?
Nope, it's only the prairie dog funds we can use on that, and we verified that with the state.
So my question is, prairie dog funds are funds you already have?
No.
No.
We've got some, and then we'll be receiving.
Be receiving additional stuff.
It's, it's in our revenue area.
You've got revenue, and then you've got expenses, and that matches.
Yep.
We're trying to make a match.
I say, I wouldn't say matches, but.
Right now, we are very short on gravel, and we have been for a couple of years, so.
And the price part has increased greatly.
Yes, so that alone, if we would want to secure adequate gravel amount, it'd be, it'd probably blow up our budget. So we're trying to keep that down to where we can have, I don't even know if you can use the word reasonable amount of gravel, but we, we gotta get some, we, I don't know if we have.
We're almost out now.
Yeah, and almost out means.
Use up everything at the Fleeger pit, and we're, we're done with Randy's up there. We, and the other thing is, was to look at the gravel is like, we're spending sixteen dollars a ton buying it, I wouldn't say over the counter, from private enterprise. If we do it ourselves, we can cut off almost four dollars a ton, and that, that's a huge, that's like almost half of the whole budget, of the gravel budget.
And the other thing we're running into is like with the Main Street project and some of these other bigger projects, they're also buying up all the gravel, and so.
From the private.
Marathon and them, they just go buy, cause they've got the money to do it, and then there's no gravel to be had.
An example of that would have been, I drove over here one day and I called Randy Byer, and he had piled gravel up at a lake. We had, our guys had been involved in it at one point. I asked him if we could speak for forty thousand tons, and then we could, so we, we had to get it approved, obviously. Yes, he said. Well, then he came, the price went from fourteen to sixteen, so I brought it in here, and I, we, in our discussion, we dropped to thirty thousand that we bought, which was four hundred and eighty thousand dollars then. So, that being said, we took, uh, with, uh, we got done with a meeting, I called him on the way back home, telling him that we approved this and we'll give our paperwork together. By that time, he told us that Beck took ten thousand of what that we had taken, that we put, and Marathon called him in a meeting, telling us he would take every grain that he would sell, and we would have been on the outside looking in. So that's why we're, and as of today, we've got two places we wanna open, and then we, and then we do have another one, Randy, we don't have the paperwork and everything approved on it, but he offered us half of what he had, if we pay for half the expenses rather than a full month.
And that was a special meeting too, to approve that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in less than an hour.
Yeah, it was a short meeting.
Forty thousand tons almost disappeared from underneath of us.
So kind of, you know, in a, in a summary is, it, it's not even what you have to pay for gravel, it's what's available. You gotta have it. It doesn't matter what you gotta pay for, and if there's, if there's no gravel to be bought, but we have a couple prospective sites that look promising, but we haven't secured those yet, but we'll, we'll find out.
If you can put a piece for, from a task year perspective, is that you're anticipating that prairie dog money will help you fill that need, uh, that's what. I think that was a thing that was missed on Wednesday, that people who were sitting here and talking about their tax increases or whatever, that they brought up, was that gravel was going, gravel budget was increasing substantially, and then I think if they would know that it's coming from prairie dog funds, they would feel differently about it, they know that was a line item, that was. They know that was a line item that was way too high, causing a lot of their taxes.
And we, we probably didn't clarify that correctly.
I think that's one thing you can also play in the hours.
I'll write it out.
Yeah. Well, I'll include some of this, but honestly, I'm asking for money, but it might be good with some of this if you just took out a, some kind of notice, you know, from a perspective. Cause my, I mean, I've got a lot of information from the meeting. Yeah. Segue into, from all these meetings, it's my, I mean, I'm gonna have info, but a lot of, I've got a feeling a lot of people are gonna kinda.
Get lost in it.
Yeah, so if you have something that's more.
Precise.
This is what we want, most want people to know right now, or something like that. That would be on.
We could do that.
Yeah.
After, after we approve it, and then show the revenues where they're coming, you know, general, make it simple. Because we get a lot of in-house.
We don't, we get what, wait for the numbers.
You said gravel now is gonna be a ground load, is what you're looking at?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yeah.
And what, what was it at the start of this meeting? It was at nine hundred thousand.
The start of this meeting.
Increasing that by a hundred thousand.
But, the preliminary, it was.
One point.
One point two five, I think.
Yeah, correct.
I.
One, two.
I, no, I think it was a million, it was in between that that we updated now.
It was five.
It was five.
One point two five, I'd say I thought I saw one point two five.
Original preliminary.
Yep.
I think it was.
And then.
Anyway, we're at a million now.
Do you anticipate prairie dog covering all of that, or just a good chunk of that? I think we are just.
Very good chunk of it.
Very good chunk of it.
I'd say a substantial amount of it anyway, I don't think we can say all, cause we don't know for sure, but.
Covering gravel.
And, and we're also estimating what that revenue is.
Yeah, we have.
Right, cause you never know what prairie dog is until you actually get it.
So basically, you're. You contacted for some.
It's possible.
We have something together.
Depends on.
Right.
Depends on how you wanna answer that question politically.
Uh, and I, I know like you said, that very long.
Cause as Carmen said, we got, what did we get in prairie dog funds?
Okay, well, putting like, we got one point four from this year that we said we could use, we have to work with the county road and the county engineer to make sure, okay, we're not gonna use so much this year, so now we got one point four, we're gonna use for next year along with one point two from twenty twenty-five. For twenty twenty-five's budget. The state said we were getting about two point two this twenty-five, so we'll have an extra million or so for twenty-six, cause it's a buy, and, uh, every two years we get money.
But it's like I said.
So now we gotta make it stretch.
Depends on how you wanna answer that question politically, you can say, well, yeah, it's gonna pay for the gravel, but it doesn't pay for just gravel, it pays for.
All road.
All road stuff. So I could, I could sit here and say, yes, prairie dog funds are gonna pay for all the gravel, but then how are you paying for?
Chip seal.
Yeah, these other items.
Chip seal is at fifteen oh five.
So it's.
That's fifteen oh five one.
Yep, and we've got one million.
We're getting money for that, we're getting money for chip seal.
Well, those are some of the other items that you see in them too.
Right, so it's. It, it. Okay.
But if you listen, the state has to give us money.
I hold you.
Okay, uh, we're gonna recess for a couple of minutes, uh, do we have more on the road?
No.
Okay, we're gonna recess for a few minutes, chairman needs a break.
I'll take a phone call. Yeah.
We, we're close, I, yeah.
I gotta call my.
I'm gonna pause.
Some departments like really want there to be a little. Ours are so elderly, I, I just gotta, getting everybody. A lot of users are locked up. I'm gonna get a job. I'll get you something for a gentleman.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. We're, we're, the fact that we're gonna be confiscated. I left control, okay. Collection, section with like greater vehicles, from permission, but also into each other, I'm not doing the measure right now, but I wanna. Other injuries, that's, that's, getting that ready this morning, and then I've got first responder, every first response organization in Mercer County, we're finishing, the small feature, that we've got all of them, and that deadline's coming up at the end of next week. And they have the wind thing, the, what's going, you know, I love, I love the, here's the real issue, this budget thing, this has to come for every county.
You're gonna make this quick.
I wonder if you'll paper get as big as.
I know, you're like the phone book.
Oh, the thing is, I don't have any of the topics, I don't have that time, do any light stories, I mean, I don't have any. I have one of the new teachers got.
Not today.
To be, to be fair, I, I would have said I, I would have said I. And now I am, I'm certainly not sure, but I would definitely leave the works to pay, but I'm not really presentation, now I don't get.
I don't know, to me it's a toss up, cause I.
It's still, fifty fifty, now it's like fifty five, forty.
Okay. Oh, yeah. There's very strong on our side, yeah.
Is the property tax system, that, that system, absolutely. No, it's the best we got, now, could we ever respond to this? Now, politics needs to be, uh, all or nothing.
Okay, we'll reconvene. Uh, what's next on anyone's minds, we did the road?
We want Terry.
Oh.
I know, but it's Donald's, have you already been on it? Tom and I are sharing.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that's the right person, thank you.
Uh, we did, okay, uh, sheriff's department, road, ah, sheriff's department, Terry, sheriff's department, road.
He's on the road.
Uh, yeah, we're done with the road.
I'm glad I'm not you this week.
Before I even look at what Terry's handing out, I do know, um, in the sheriff's department, he's having trouble hiring deputies, and I just heard a little, um, blurb on the radio. I am, I'm not gonna say what I call it, it's, it's one of the talk show programs, that, uh. Ward County is having trouble getting deputies, he can't keep deputies either, so that county is looking at increasing the deputy's wages also, cause he said, I'm, I'm losing deputies, I, I can't keep them, and I was in Ward County. And, uh, we're almost in the same situation, our sheriff can't get deputies, so it doesn't matter personalities, we just need to get some, I think some wage increases on, in the sheriff's department, so with that said.
Again, good morning, commission, again, like I said, glad I'm not you this week, but with that said, uh, that's what I'm here for. I, I wanna make sure that we have room, or ask you, implore that we make room next year for the budget increase in the salary line items that I'm asking for. I, I need to start, and it's not a want, in my opinion, I need to start a deputy in Mercer County at at least thirty dollars an hour. Uh, that's not out of line, it's actually well below, uh, you know, the state, well below what state patrol pays, it's below what, uh, one of our surrounding cities pay. So with that said, uh, in the same respect, I don't think anybody would argue with me either, that what our correctional officers slash dispatchers slash everything they do, starting wage on that should be twenty-four dollars an hour. So, and, uh, there's no, I won't find an argument in our community for that, for what, what these people do, but if we do that, I have existing employees that, that's what they're making now. Uh, this, this bump I'm asking for does not affect anything, uh, any of my administrative staff, any of my leadership, the only people it would affect is my, uh, regular shift workers, that, I call them the bread and butter of the organization. Doing the work with the prisoners and doing the work, the work out in the road, so it's just the shift workers, twenty-four, seven people, the people answering the phone and stuff like that, none of the leadership of them doing the same thing, not my detectives, youth bear or anything. This is just straight for the shift workers, the dispatchers and the deputies, uh, if I could, I'm asking, some of them would be moved up like a dollar, now, or this year yet, before the raise would come through. Because, again, I'm worried about the future, if we get locked in to wages where I'm at with the budget, uh, I'm gonna have a mess with morale in the future. Uh, what, I got the numbers broke down there for you, uh, them numbers you're looking at, what them deputies make, that's in, if we, I worked the numbers out to the extreme of using all the overtime that's allotted for them. So them numbers are skewed to the worst they can, the best for the deputy that's getting paid it, but the worst they could be for the county financially. No deputy or no correctional officer hopefully is going to work the amount of hours that are listed on that sheet. So that's why I just made a note them to line items, or, or, or for that. The increases are all modest, and if we do them before we go into next year, I, I, then I would be in a position where whatever you guys come up with for the county as a whole, you know, with your wage studies and stuff, that we could make it work with them, we just, our, my department would fall right in line. Right now, I can't even, uh, I couldn't even make it work with my, uh, department with your wage study, because how, you know, it isn't right to begin with, how do you start add, giving people a bump after five years, when they're not where they're supposed to be anyway? It just won't work, this would put me out of position where I can work with whatever you guys decide to do in the future, that, uh, the entire amount of money that would change, in a worst case scenario, working all overtime that's allotted, would be that eighty-two thousand down for next year. And I'll remind the commission that this year I've requested entirely with nine-one-one, uh, dispatch, sheriff's department, all, everything that, uh, public safety does, I requested twenty-eight thousand dollars less than I requested last for this year. So I've actually requested less money next year for this year, that's including your guys' one fifty if you choose to go that way. So you can see, I'm, I've actually, if it was just my department, would be bringing the county's budget down, I've streamlined, we've saved money in nine-one-one too, a lot of that money's going back into the general fund, where we've, you know, we've taken out a complete employee there. And my revenues over the last two years, you can see have jumped extremely high from what they were, so, I mean, we're, we're working on revenues, we're doing things, I think, verbally and fiscally responsible over there. And I need to have a payoff for the employees that are the bread and butter of the organization, them shift workers, and, and get them online at least so we're comparable, uh, with, with the surrounding counties. So that, that's what I'm asking for, uh, I'll also remind the commission that, uh, that nine-one-one, you were, you know, you were able to return that one hundred and thirty-four thousand back. I guess I should have been a little ahead of time and probably a better, uh, police officer than a, a politician, because I could have, there was more money than I needed right there, but I just hung on to that, but I returned that back to the general fund. Uh, trying to help the county out as a whole, that was over in that fund sheet we took away, I mean, and that is one thirty-four, something like that, that we didn't need for nine-one-one, where we could use.
It was a nine-one-one equipment fund, right?
Yeah.
No, that goes into.
No, I, I mean, we returned the, back to the general fund.
Oh, yes, 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 we did.
Yes, we did that like two minutes, two meetings ago, that's why I remind people, so, someone forgot, right?
No, I just needed that.
Yes.
Where?
So with, with that said, I would just, uh, I just asked that, uh, everybody says with these guys out there answering the phones and taking them hard calls and everything, and, and again, this isn't for my, this isn't the leadership or the people making, you know, that are a little up, higher up the food chain in the department. Everybody says that, they all wanna say, you know, thank the first responders and everything else, I guess now's the time we can put the rubber to the road and thank our first responders and get them paid what I need to pay them, so I can, even if I can't retain them, at least they're getting compensated a little bit for what they do, so. And then the other thing that we can. I would like to make that change before, if, right now I'm scheduled, I looked at my numbers real hard, I'm probably coming in under, under budget about, it's gonna be close. If something major don't happen in the county, I'm probably coming in under my budget, it can be around thirty thousand dollars. I'd like to make these changes before the first of the year for easier accounting and for everybody, and, and, and to let that be seen, and I think, like I say, in a perfect world, I'm still gonna come in under, my total budget for public safety, I should come in under or at, if we make these changes before the end of the year.
Well, and you're still short of deputies, so.
And I'm, yeah, and I'm still short of deputies.
Fair statement, yeah.
And I have, well, currently I have, uh, two, I'm looking at probably losing two correctional officers, one for health reasons and another for other, other reasons that are his business, but, uh, nothing, you know, it was, these were financial issues why them two are going, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the trouble of recruiting that, recruiting people to, to, to replace them. And again, like I say, but for a couple of years ago, it wasn't that long ago, we, you know, we looked at adding, and we're still not completely there yet, but we're looking at adding, after expenses, up to four hundred thousand dollars of, of revenue, that we have to have the jail anyway. And, uh, we did that, and, and these guys, they all, I didn't do the work, my employees did that work, this would be the way, the way to show them, and that, that just came onto the, onto the, uh, county's, uh, you know, radar two years ago, with, what we can realize with, uh, with money coming in for that jail. I don't, I have, doing the rough math, I would say that, that jail probably pays sixty percent now of the wages of the dispatch and the correctional staff, just their wages, I mean, there's other expenses there and benefits. But by doing that, isn't that incredible, we gotta have the jail regardless, so, and, let's, that, that's what I want, is just, uh, just, uh, show, show my employees that, uh, they're valued and, and get them where they're in need to be, because if we get locked into a budget, and, and of course officially I'm in uniform, I can't take a stance before, or for or against measure four. But in my opinion, if that locks me into a budget, I cannot fix these wages in the future without doing substantial other changes in my department, and, uh, I just, I don't see the room, we've been, you know, we've been flat for what I've asked for the budget this last couple of years, and again, I asked for, before I was thinking, I asked for, uh, twenty-eight thousand less for twenty twenty-five. The numbers you guys got now, than I asked for in twenty twenty-four, so, and I thank you for your time again. Quite about you this year. One thing that people, people don't see or think about either is that, when you mentioned two, losing, uh, for whatever reason, the, the two jailers or whatever, every time we do these, uh, balances for the, uh, bills that we come in there, there's money for uniforms, there's money for.
No place.
Uh, training, there's all this stuff that keeps adding up and adding up and adding up, and if we can defrase some of that by paying these people and keeping them here.
And if we can defrase some of that by paying these people and keeping them here, would be a huge plus.
They need to start making deputies and correctional officers all six foot, two-hundred pounds. Male and female, okay. They got to be the same size, and I could get around. But no, yeah, seriously, that is true. The, the price of replacing an employee is, while, it, it, it is way up there, it does drive a lot of my budget, where the price of retaining one, plus what the county gets paying for their buck up and experienced employee, that's, that's something I can't even, you know, put a dollar, a dollar figure on. I do know I, in the last few years, for various reasons, some political, I've lost a lot of talent in, in, in my department that can't be replaced. But the, the unfunded liability people talk about unpaid vacation and sick leave and everything, that isn't even an issue with my department anymore. I don't have any, a lot of people with vacation or, or sick leave if they do leave anymore. So it's more on the, on the end of it, if I hire new employee, getting them trained and getting them outfitted to, to take over, that's where my expenses come in, too. That is true.
Okay.
And we've, again, Commissioner Baum and I have worked hard on that to try to make it as fair as possible to, and as frugal as possible to make it work with them, two wages, twenty-four an hour and thirty an hour. If I can do that, you guys put me back in the game. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Travis.
And just for conversation here, we could even, if we would want to enact this, I think we could even start at October first because that would make this month's payroll inclusive. Just a comment, just a thought.
Well, we're only like at the fourth or third or fourth anyway, so.
Yeah, whatever.
I don't even know what day it is anymore.
It's like it's the fourth.
That's a good question. It's the fourth.
Okay. It would make life a lot easier for accounting, too, so.
As far as what?
Huh?
As far as what?
If you're going to start at the beginning of this month or...
I think we need to talk to them because they have a different payroll.
Whatever, yeah.
For this month, when, when does your payroll start?
Yeah, that's where we need to check before we set any dates.
We're actually working hours, yeah. We could do the, you could do the payroll adjustment, we just pass on the wages at, at the end of the month.
Generally, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, generally in the motion, you have an effective date, and we...
If it's January of October first, we, we could make the payroll changes for the hourly rates.
Okay.
I, I would just make it effective the current pay period. Because it's, because our pay period isn't done on the first, I would just call it the effective pay, the current pay period.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Yeah, we could do it that way.
You want a motion or what?
Yep.
No, I need one if we're going to approve this.
I'm in the position to accept this at the, at the current, at the next current pay period.
Uh, just...
As Terry presented, these numbers here.
Can, can we do that at this meeting?
He asked to be put on this agenda and...
It's a budget period.
Yep, and he said it was budget, yep. I told him, come on, yeah.
We're under the impression that we can.
Pardon?
We're, we're under the impression that we can do it.
Because he asked.
Okay, if we, if we were, are told by our state's attorney that we couldn't and we need to do it in a special meeting, we'll have a special meeting, but at this point, we'll move forward. I have a motion to accept these wage adjustments for the sheriff's department. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
And it's effective for the current?
Effective for the current pay period.
I want to make sure that's included.
And, yeah.
Jean and I, Jean are going to recuse myself from this.
Pardon?
I'm going to recuse myself from this.
See, is Janie in here?
Janie's not on there.
She's not on there, but she's in that department.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Here none, Rick?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Jean votes aye, motion passed.
So you guys are going to need those numbers figured into the budget for...
Yes.
Yes, please.
The next discussion?
Yes.
So then...
And you guys got to find the others?
Yes.
Okay.
What, do we know what the total difference is?
What's that?
Was it eighty?
I think he says eighty-seven.
Okay, so...
Okay, for the twenty-twenty-five budget, eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Here's the bean mill.
Our final appropriations.
Put something in, we got to take it out.
Yeah. That was my next thing.
Or...
It's got to come out of the general budget then, right?
General fund, yeah.
Just a minute.
Or...
Is, and you say if we put something in, we got to take something out, I thought we just can't go over the fifty-eight mils.
You've got two figures you can't go over. The top one is the expenses on the general fund, and the bottom one is the mills.
That isn't, that's not...
Well, the expenses affect the mills.
It doesn't affect the mills, but it's the final appropriation.
Yeah, but that's kind of cool, I mean, that is, you got to look at...
They're all very exactly the same.
So, okay, so let's look at, right now your final appropriations are exactly equal to what you had in the preliminary.
Right? Am I looking at this right?
Yes, yes, right now final appropriations are exactly equal, where we improved it with the preliminary one.
It was all through the...
Yeah, not expenditures.
And it has to come out of the expense, but yeah, both of these numbers are what you looked at, and this is good, a really good one there. So if we're going to put that eighty-seven thousand...
Which has nothing to do with this one.
Eighty-seven thousand has to come out somewhere else.
Yeah, so that's why we got to look at it.
That don't even make sense to me.
It's the same thing we ran into last year.
Yep.
Because if, if our original mill was fifty-eight mils, and we're down to forty-six mils, and we add something to get, let's just say, whatever we add, as long as it stays under fifty-eight mils, but then I'm told that our appropriated money, which is actually our expenses, can't go over what we had before, this, this, so how do we, this don't even make sense to me.
Your revenues went up, Jean. Your revenues went up.
Yeah, but...
So your mills went down, that's nothing in the expense line affected that formula, just the revenue.
So the rule is that the preliminary budget, once you've approved your preliminary budget, you cannot exceed your mills, but you also cannot exceed your expenses.
That's what I'm being told right now.
If the mills since changed.
Yep.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, on the recorder budget, in the preliminary budget, we had talked about, she had a line item in there for thirty thousand dollars on document preservation. We talked about taking that from her document preservation fund, but that thirty thousand was still left in the preliminary, I believe.
It was moved to a different account.
Yeah, so I think we could cut thirty thousand dollars out of the expense on the recorder's document preservation, um, line item, and that would cut thirty thousand. And it's not really changing her budget because essentially we're paying, if she gets any new books or anything, it comes out of that fund.
She had a whole, a huge amount, like a hundred and some.
Like a hundred and seven thousand in that fund.
Yeah, it should be here.
It's not, it's not.
Yeah, that's had its own, okay, but...
I'm just going to blurt this out and see if, this is like a political, see if this is other than political suicide, but what if we, what... But we can raise, so we, so we can raise our cash reserve up to any amount, as long as we don't go over fifty-eight mils.
Correct. But if you, if you plan to put an expense in...
But that's not an expense.
Yeah, but listen, listen.
And that's what I'm saying, that's, that's where I'm getting at, that's not an expense. So, go ahead, but I mean...
So we could cut anything in our expense to get us to the seventy-five, forty-four, up our cash reserve, and then do a budget amendment...
After the first of the year.
After the first of the year...
Like we did this year.
To actually correct what we cut.
Yes.
When you put in appropriation, it does not affect the expense.
The appropriations.
Appropriations or allocation?
That million I got in there on the general fund.
No, allocation, allocation.
That doesn't affect it.
No, what about an allocation?
What they're saying is, they're, if they take two-hundred thousand dollars out of the appropriations...
Yep.
And just decide later what they're going to cut and add, put two-hundred, or put whatever I just said into there. It doesn't change this. And then after the first of the year, they were doing amendment to put all that stuff back in and take it out of the cash reserve.
It's how we correct, is the health insurance.
To put it even a little bit simpler on what you just said, we can cut the, the final appropriation by two-hundred thousand, increase the cash reserve by two-hundred thousand, and then do an amendment after the budget gets approved, and use the two-hundred thousand in the cash reserve to cover what we cut. Boy, let the taxpayers hear that one, see if my phone rings. Well, that's like unreal.
We don't make these rules.
No.
It's just the way the, the rules are set up and that's...
And, and we have the cash reserve there for a reason. And to me, this is an appropriate reason to do for the sheriff's department.
Mess with all I have to do is raise the cash reserve and not mess with the expenses because it doesn't affect...
But you still got to drop expenses.
The cash reserve only affects the mill.
Yes, but you just said, if we give, if we raise seven-five, four-four, three-sixty-seven, but we can't raise that by one dollar, which are expenses.
Right, we can't.
But we can increase our cash reserve.
Okay, and I increased it for things by two-hundred thousand, remember? You guys had had it at eight-hundred thousand, I raised it to a million.
You did that, yeah?
I did that, so we have extra money.
So now you can go to one-point-two and do the same thing. Is what we said, or one-point-one if you want. Huh?
Why can't we use what we have in there? Okay, then what, what are we cutting on? Because you're not going to be...
Budgets then.
What he's saying...
No, 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 no. What, what we're saying is, as of today, when we add this amount to the sheriff's budget, that's going to make our final appropriation over seven-five, four-four. So we have to cut something, and to get that to seven-five, four-four again...
Okay, so what are you going to cut?
Exactly. But it doesn't, what I'm trying to point out is, it doesn't matter, it matters, but it doesn't matter what we cut because we can take that amount and just increase our cash reserve by that amount, and then after the budget's approved, for next year, we do a budget amendment.
Okay, but the thing is, like you said, you want to fix the budget, you're going to amend the budget, because right now his, he's fixed at that certain wage, so no matter what, he's going to go in the red. Even if afterwards you, whatever, okay?
Yep.
What I'm saying is to simplify this, we have a million buffer in there right now as we sit. And really, his going up is going to be eighty-seven thousand, one sixty-four, right? That's all you guys want.
We need to cut, we need to cut that out of that seven-five-five or whatever that...
No, because right now, right where it is, and you're going to do these changes, you're going to amend these changes after the new year, right? After the budget's approved, because we have to...
Well, whether you do that or not, you still have, in our original conversation, you have to, we have to drop the expenses to cover that.
Actually, not with where we're sitting right now, because that appropriation of a million dollars, it's, it's there. We've got, our expenses are set, and to me, I'm just trying to simplify this process for you guys because to go in and start cutting...
I get what you're saying, yeah.
But the million's there. Our appropriations are good, you've got a low now.
So if you use eighty-seven thousand, maybe you'd have nine-hundred and thirteen thousand left.
Use the million for something else that we set aside right now, sitting there, it's set.
But by the same token, she can't go into this budget then and show you what it's going to look like without...
Okay.
Because if she does that, then she is going to change the appropriation.
Because actually, last year you guys did the same, I mean, you did this last year, remember Travis?
Yeah.
So why not use the million I got there?
That's fine.
As long as you're not going to go, you know, this isn't a whole lot. And he's also likely not going to go over, is likely not going to be in the red because he's been without a deputy, in, without jail status for an entire year, so...
Yes.
That's not a fair statement to make, that he will be in the red.
Okay.
No, no, no.
That's, okay.
No, no, I'm just saying the twenty-twenty-five budget is set without these bump ups, Jamie. I'm not saying, I'm just saying that's just a fact.
But you did say, you said he will be in the red.
Yeah, he will, even if you amend him, the AS four-hundred is going to show, he's going to go in the red because he put in bump ups that weren't budgeted.
All right, so we voted to pass these bump ups for the sheriff's department, put them, put them in, and have that for us at our next meeting, the effective amount. Okay? How it'll affect the budget, we'll see at that point. All right.
And then we'll get it.
Okay, so if you guys choose to do what you're going to do, then you need to, yeah.
We'll, we'll address it at our next meeting, if we need to make some changes. Okay. Is there anything, any other items of...
When are you going to have an action?
Not there yet. I have one other concern, and I won't be popular on this one either. Our HR slash EM, I'm just going to do a, a kind of a synopsis here. That was originally offered sixty-five thousand, and we were, in all our discussions we had, it was talked about that that will become a part-time job after things get settled down. We understood it might take about a year, and then it was going to become part-time, which I remember some of the discussion at around three days a week. Well, I wasn't sure if the three days a week, if the salary was going to get reduced because of that, I kind of thought it would, I wasn't sure if it'd stay at sixty-five. Well, then later on, that position was also offered to have the EM included, and a motion was made and passed to give an additional twenty thousand for that job. My impression and understanding of this was to keep the salary at about sixty-five thousand when that job became part-time, so that there wouldn't be a big reduction in the pay. So the effective salary would have, mathematically, the way I did it, with that becoming part-time three days a week, and the twenty thousand dollars, it would have came out to about a fifty-six thousand dollar salary. What, what the rest of the commission was understanding and or doing or thinking was way different than what I was thinking, even if you wanted to keep it at sixty-five with the additional work. I, right now, am still having issues with that job being at eighty-five thousand, which we just gave a twenty thousand dollar pay raise to, and then given another dollar fifty at the end of the year. I need to ask the rest of the commission on clarification on this, if I'm way out of line, if that was not the thought, if the end result was to pay eighty-five thousand annually for the two jobs combined. I hear crickets.
My thought was that when we did it, it was a combined total wage, so what it was set, it was what I thought we were doing.
That was going to be a combined total wage of eighty-five?
Yeah. When we talked about it, that's what, that's what I thought it was.
So... I'm going to poke you a little bit. So you were okay with paying sixty-five thousand a year for about three days a week?
I didn't think it was ever going to go down to three days a week. I thought the HR was going to be basically a full-time position.
Forty hours a week?
Yeah.
Okay. I was on the...
That means you're giving her...
I was under the impression it was going to turn into, I know in a lot of our discussion that it was going to become basically a part-time job, that there wasn't going to possibly be enough work for just HR at Mercer County to be forty hours a week. there wasn't going to possibly be enough work for just HR at Mercer County to be forty hours a week. But that's just me.
That was my take on it, so.
I think it's proven otherwise, but, you know. But then at budget too, Liza confirmed the hours, and we talked about that at the last meeting, the regular meeting.
But it never went anywhere, and then Gwen caught me in the hallway, and now it's going to Todd, and so it's.
Well, we need to verify exactly what we talked about at the regular meeting, she needs it divided to do those grants for the EM. It has to be done. But if you hire her for full-time HR, then that means her EM is all overtime.
Not as.
No, we don't have separate positions, yours is elected, Jamie, it's different. This is a position, we're hiring employees, we only hire them full-time.
We have Jim doing it, we have multiple others doing it, and some of this is, but what are, what, other than the payroll, what is your involvement in it?
I mean, this. I'm the auditor, I have to do the payroll. We have to make sure this is right. And it's, why shouldn't I be involved?
Okay, just, just a minute here. You're saying that she's, yeah, she. The position is being paid for forty hours a week for HR. And any EM work is an additional hours?
Right now, she's being paid as a full-time HR EM. That's what she's being paid at eighty-five thousand a year, that's where we're at.
Yes.
But if you guys are saying that HR, and, and we just talked about it, even at budget time, we talked about it, the hours. I needed the hours to split those two positions.
Okay.
Because she has to keep track of her time for EM, in order to do the job.
The grant, too.
And the grant is part of that job, now.
Part of this is all salary too, so the number, you can split it, so it doesn't.
Right, so, but right now, she's salary, she's exempt, and that's what we do, that's who we're sitting with, that's what we're paying her.
I mean, it should be able to be fixed up.
Eighty-five thousand, but she's HR EM.
It's not over just.
Yeah?
And the split hours are seventy-five for HR, twenty-five for EM.
Okay.
Right?
It was discussed, it was never actually.
Oh, well, that's.
Okay, 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 just a minute. So, I'm trying, I'm just trying to follow you here now, so I heard you use the word, and if we pay her, it's got the overtime, I'm trying to.
Okay, that's where, um, if you're saying she's full-time HR, and then she's taking on the EM part of it, full-time is twenty-eight hours, twenty-eighty hours a year, well, anything above that is overtime.
But she's an exempt employee.
But she's an exempt employee.
Okay, how would she be exempt if she's gotta keep track of her hours for the EM? And she's working for all of her county, that's another thing that. Uh, that's the only, and that's what brought this up too, is we had to figure out, and even, we have to figure out how she's gonna be, you know, accountable for the EM side versus the HR.
My question is, do you wanna do it, or do you mind us, I think we should go to the state, and we should find out the message, and other people are doing it too.
Like, he's not the only one that's called on.
It's not, not something, yeah, it's been pulled out of the, out of the hat.
Yeah, look at Lee Collins, she's the road department, kind of secretary.
And, and I was EM nine-one-one, but you, just like Jim, and just like Cindy, they had two jobs, and it was all one, with one.
No.
And usually you get. A nine dollars. It was all, because you had to keep track of each position.
Mark, do you wanna do it, or I'm gonna do it, or what?
I would prefer you do it, because I'm not gonna be here very much longer.
Okay.
What, what are you guys?
Well, I don't know how much, he's gonna go to the state.
I'm gonna go down and talk to him and see how they examined. And we'll give a method of her madness, so we know what we're doing, rather than just arguing about it.
Yeah, we need, I hear what you're saying.
Well, and, and that's, we just gotta figure out how.
But we're gonna, we're gonna need clarification on this, yes.
Because I mean, we can say we go back and forth, and we're not gonna talk.
Except employee has no set hours, so to speak.
Yeah, so they can't.
Okay, okay, so when you ask to make sure it's EM.
Yes, I'm gonna get everything, a list of concerns.
Because the EM is the part that makes the difference.
All the questions asked, you know, not come back and only have half of them.
That's the part EM.
I will stop and visit before I go.
Then I have another question. Jean's not done. I'm gonna get thrown out of here, yep, I'm on commission. Under the updated salary budget sheet that you sent out to us.
Yeah.
And, and I, I don't know, maybe.
The one from yesterday?
The one I printed out yesterday, and I'm, and you probably, my, my other four commissioners here will probably correct me and get me on, back on track here, but Jen Newmiller, there's an additional, uh, a dollar an hour, and Jenny Detman, an additional fifty cents, did we ever?
Okay, that was for, well, you saw it at the budget time when she talked to you, but that was for, they're gonna be qualified for training, and I believe the six-month thing for Jenny.
Yep.
Yep.
That's what that was.
So we approve that?
Those were already.
That was at the time of the offers to Jen, when she got her additional class.
Now, as long as it was approved, I'm, that's my question.
She had to finish her class.
Well, this is for.
Okay.
November first, and I think it was announced.
All right. Other than that, I think. What? So why is can't, like, for instance, Candy Strand, no, I'm not picking on Candy Strand, I'm just gonna pick on that position there. Why is that calculated at twenty-two hundred hours?
Um.
There's a few of these, I'm, I'm wondering, uh.
Yeah, it's called Gwen, because, um, she went through her, this is what they're presently doing. Thank you, Princess.
Oh, okay.
No, because if I do the, the math, and I'm gonna take thirty-three hundred divided by a buck fifty, I come up with.
Can you come in here a minute, we got questions about the salaries.
Okay.
Awesome, thanks.
Because when I go up, and I, I look at these other ones, I see, you know, the, uh, the asterisk, the double asterisk, and triple asterisk, and I get that. But these don't have any of that there. And so they're, instead of thirty-one twenty, it's thirty-three hundred.
Blue colored, their overtime isn't estimated in their salary, but I want Gwen to confirm that.
Because we don't have to. I think, no, he has his own.
Anyway, the whole, um. Right.
I know, but yours.
I don't have to address the road department, because we changed that. Okay.
Yeah.
In the meantime, does anybody else got a question that could be?
Do you want to decide a date for another meeting, or is Kathy got it?
Pardon? I got so many papers, I don't know where I'm at.
Yours looks different than ours, I'm just checking.
What?
Is her color even pretty, and yours is just black and white?
Oh, my, my color didn't work. I ordered color for my color printer this morning. I also had someone else in my house giving heck for that.
What was Rick doing at Chad's?
I don't have my reading aid.
Okay, one more time. When do we have to have the budget, budget finalized?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten. So we either gonna have a, I really don't want a Saturday or Sunday meeting. So we would have to look at the seventh, eighth, or ninth. We can have a Saturday or Sunday meeting also. It's up to you guys.
I'd rather have a Monday.
I mean, I don't wanna have to have maintenance and everybody come up here on a weekend.
Right.
It's doable.
Liza, does Monday work for you?
Depends on what time you're picking.
I could not hear you.
Depends on what time.
What time works for you.
How long do we need it to be?
Oh my word.
Well, we're here longer than I thought we'd be. Right.
Does eight o'clock in the morning work?
Yep.
Eight till ten?
I just have to be back in my office by eleven.
All right. Can we do October seventh at eight o'clock? And we will be out, you will be out, put it this way, Liza, you're gonna be out here by ten thirty.
Ten thirty, I have to be here.
So we'll try to be done, if not, we'll have to schedule one more.
Seven.
Okay, so we'll have a special, special budget meeting, October seventh at eight AM. Uh, the same as before, you worded the same as you have been.
You want me to pick you up on the ways, you can sleep over here?
Yep.
I'll pick you up on the ways, you can sleep.
There's one up here, Gwen. Come on, people up here.
Oh, yeah, you get right up here.
They got a question on Candy Strand's, um.
Candy Strand, if I take a dollar fifty an hour divided into thirty-three hundred, I come up with twenty-two hundred hours. Why is she twenty-two hundred hours and not twenty-eighty, like everyone else?
That I don't know.
Well, I think it's her overtime.
Well, if you don't know, we sure as heck do.
No, isn't it, she's in the blue, and then under that, on the first page.
Yeah, but, but.
Move on that sheet that you have, that's. Overtime of eighty hours included in estimated salary slash a hundred hours, if, yeah, it would be blue, it'd be eighty hours included on estimated salary. That's what the twenty-two hundred is that.
Eighty hours overtime.
Yeah, for her overtime. But we have to estimate.
Kind of with the road department, that's a hundred hours.
Yep, they have different levels.
I need the sheriff's, when the hundred hours.
They have different levels too, within their department.
But, I, I, I know that, I, because I can see the, uh, but isn't, uh, regular twenty-eighty?
Yes.
And if you add eighty hours, that's twenty-one sixty, we're still not at twenty-two hundred.
Hundred and twenty hours.
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty hours more than twenty-eighty. And I'm just.
Well, no, because if you died, died, overtime would be not a dollar fifty, a dollar, ah, would be two twenty-five, a dollar fifty. Twenty, one twenty hours straight time is eighty hours overtime, right, Gwen?
Good. No, I'm, I got, I got something going on.
Okay, then let me go redo my question in another way. So if we take thirty-one sixty-three, you're gonna only add a dollar fifty to that, correct?
Is that what you're talking about doing, or?
Uh, landfill supervisor, whatever the, I hate calling people by name.
Just trying to see if the numbers are accurate on the sheet that we got. Right, Jean?
Pardon?
You're just trying to see if the numbers are accurate on the sheet that we got, right?
Yes, I, I wanna, I wanna make, what I'm getting to is that it's a dollar fifty raise.
Yes.
Because a dollar fifty raise, a twenty-eighty hours is, what is it, thirty-one twenty? And this is thirty-three hundred?
Yes.
And not that it's coming out to be like a two-dollar raise.
No, she gets a dollar fifty raise per hour, but she gets overtime, and it's with two dollars.
So that it's actually two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Comes off of that expense.
For those extra hours, it's two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay.
Got it?
Well? Okay.
She's at thirty-one sixty.
I brought it to the attention of the rest of the commission, and we're all okay with that?
Yep.
Okay?
It's actually the way it works.
And that's, that's fine, I just want it to be.
Yeah, but everybody works that way, there's a lot of over, you know.
I get that, but like I said, when I go into the sheriff's department, you have the, like, the double asterisk here that says twenty-four, forty-eight dollars.
The double asterisk. Okay, because there's a. There's a blue. See, I don't have colored sheet, that's why.
I'm, I understand.
And look up here.
Okay, now I'm gonna get real.
Eighty hours included in, that's how we do that.
Okay. Okay, so my, uh, it's the price I pay for not having my color printer, huh? All right. Any other questions? Uh, Jean better quit, or he's gonna get run out of here. I, I'm, I'm done, I have no more. Anybody else?
Okay, I wanna review real quickly what you want on Monday. So I'm going to, okay, I'm gonna take out the road department bump outs.
Yes.
Gravel crushing goes to a million, their reserve goes two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, not to exceed fourteen-point-eight-one mils. Okay, that's that. Now, the other thing you wanted was to put the, um, the sheriff's office bump ups, and then the twenty-five into their budget, you know, into the salaries, right?
You'll have to look at that.
So it'd be the current salary.
Okay.
And then you'll have to add the dollar fifty for.
Right, and, and I can do that easily in here, but what do you want me to do? Is there anything else you want me to, because that's only gonna go in here, I'm not gonna touch the gen, the blue book. Right?
What do you mean though?
It's just way more paper.
The blue book, I'm not gonna go in and change our, um, the mill levy in the blue book. I'm, I'm putting them in the side, what do you want me to do with the blue book, Ben?
Well, the blue book, you're gonna have to change it for the road department.
Yeah. Oh, no, that, yeah, I've taken out of that, but I'm talking for your sheriff's office wages.
You don't have to change your general fund in the blue book a little bit there too.
Okay, so you want me to go in and make those changes in the blue book?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I will do that.
Because you're gonna have to put, their effective wages as of today are different. So you'll have to have them, and then do the.
And it's gonna change the cash reserve for two thousand twenty-four, because we're gonna have additional wages, right? Is that what you're trying to say, Jean? And then it'll increase the expenditures for two thousand twenty-five too.
But they want me to put it in without raising those expenses. But I would just put them in and go over, and then they have to figure out how they wanna handle it.
And they forget to take that out of the recorder too.
Just like we did last year.
I just, I, I'm pretty sure we already switched that over.
Verify it then.
Yep.
I'm gonna use.
Because she took it out of her regular budget, which is in the general fund, but her recorder fees, that, that part of it is not in the general fund, it is in a separate account.
But here, just like this, make it a little simpler for you. Just like we did last year, and I'm gonna use it as an example, all right? Like Dawn said, put it in there, put it in the red, and then Mon, on Monday morning, we're like, we, last time we didn't know about it, this time we will. We're gonna sit there, and I'm just gonna use this for an example. Oh, we need hun, we need eighty-seven five, or whatever it is, a hundred thousand. Oh, we need, we need eighty-seven-five, or whatever it is, a hundred thousand, I get fifty grand, somebody else, you know. We can take, we can make it so your numbers match. It's not, it's not so difficult, you don't have to.
Do you want to say it when you do the amendment?
Okay, so I'm going to put it in there, and it'll be over, then you guys are the ones that are going to choose what's coming out.
Yeah.
Exactly.
There, that's what I needed to hear.
So that makes your life a whole lot simpler, and we don't have to change all this stuff.
Yep.
All right, we'll do.
And then we'll stop at the road department, and we will get something to look at there, too.
Anything else? Got it? Got any more questions, Carmen?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
All right, meeting adjourned.
This PDF, what? So I'm going to print that out, go back through, make sure, I, I know these, I don't know how that, this is very confusing. Well, it takes some.